They didn't work for you like ten years though, so it wasn't.
Uh, no.
I'm sorry.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, no, I can't run anymore.
Oh, yeah, same way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My dad's like, yeah, there's no way. Yeah.
Well.
I do, I think.
Oh, I'm with you.
And some of the words that might actually.
Yeah.
Very good. Oh, so.
Yeah, I would like to welcome everybody uh to the July eighth uh City of Idaho Springs Work Session. And uh we'll get started here right on time at six thirty. Well, we have the two items. Uh, I'd like to start off with this property line adjustment for Virginia Canyon Mountain Bike Park. Uh, we have a nice uh good size color. Uh, map there showing some changes and uh yellow, welcome, glad you could join us.
Yeah, thanks for having me, everybody. You want me to jump in here?
Yeah, yeah, we're in here.
Yeah, might might help. So, obviously, you know, uh, property owner to the east, Bob Young. Uh, so east in this, in this map is actually the top. Yeah, there you go. And currently, uh, the pink is what the City of Idaho Springs owns. And the green is what uh. We're trying to get swapped, right? So, what this allows for the park is an exit out the south side of the park. See the green?
Yeah, so the yellow would be the new property line, right?
Yep.
And it's close to an even Steven trade, I mean, size wise.
It's identical, yeah.
It is identical, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-three six.
Yeah, okay.
And so the line follows roughly the creek over there on that side on Gilson Gulch.
Mm-hmm.
And if you notice, there's that little tiny piece of property to the west.
Yeah.
Northwest there, parcel one.
Right, Queen Mills side.
That one, yeah, that one, Young actually owns, which if we swap this, that allows us to build the trail better in that area.
Okay.
Uh, otherwise, we have to try to width that thing.
Sure.
So I've been out there, I went out there with Bob Young just because I didn't like the line at first. And we walked that property line, uh, most of the stuff to the north was in question, and he has cows. And so he wants his cows in that little area down there. In the north area where it's got a little bit of flatness and some grass.
Like parcel two?
Parcel.
Five?
Two, I think, because parcel five would be.
Is that what we're swapping, that's what we're.
Two Idaho Springs, parcel three, yeah, so it'd be that.
Parcel two.
Yep.
So we have, we own parcel three and we don't have parcel two.
Yeah, okay. He wanted more of that parcel of three, but we talked about it, he pushed the line a little bit for us, so. Uh. Yeah, so that gives him a place for his cattle. And it's not in the way of our trail design, so. The one issue might be, you know, cows in the park on trails with bike riders running really fast, so. He mentioned putting in a fence, so. They'll do that.
I was gonna say, well, that'd be our job, yeah.
That would be our job, unfortunately, uh, Colorado is the fence outstanding.
Fence out, yep.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's outstanding.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, well, he actually mentioned doing, so.
Well, we could still own the fence and he could install it, I mean, that's, that happens.
No.
Yeah, it does, it's on my land to me, thank you. We own the fence and it keeps the cows out, so it's the same thing, but in this case.
It's fenced out, yeah.
We can, he could purchase the fence for us and it'd still be fenced out.
So explain that. Should the, we're responsible to keep the cows off of our.
Yes.
Yeah, the state.
They, it really, agriculture has a lot of.
Power is a little bit of a reach, therefore, you can, BLM was, that's what the problem involves with BLM is. A lot of your BLM lease, you could have cows on it and it's your responsibility to make sure you close the gates as you cross. Otherwise, my cows get out.
Yep.
Not my cows. Northern Colorado is very much.
Well, God forbid a bike, it's one of them cows.
So, just saying that, if his cows get out, doesn't he have a problem?
Oh, my God. Horrible.
Nope, we do.
Well, his cows, he's gotta track them down.
It's not, doesn't matter.
Have to track them down, but yeah.
It doesn't matter.
He can have his cows on anybody's land?
It doesn't matter, Scott.
It's, it's, it's bad, it's, if you don't want them on your property, you have to fence them out.
Yep.
It's kind of messed up, right?
If we're looking, if he wants his cows right here, where would we, would we do the whole line?
But it's the bikers.
And you could do like right here.
Well, I, I think the good news is. You're not under any obligation as a property owner, however.
Until the bike rider hits the cow.
However, and this one, where I'm going, like, you wouldn't necessarily have to fence all of it, just where cows would have reasonable access maybe to get onto our trails.
To the trail.
You know, if there is uh cliff type areas that are suitable for mountain goes, we wouldn't have to fence it off because cows aren't gonna navigate that.
Right.
He's like flatter areas, yeah, they probably wouldn't have any of that.
Could we, did he mention it, could we negotiate something with him? I mean, yes, we have laws, but.
I, I'll tell you, anything's negotiable, but it is our responsibility.
If he mentioned it.
He did mention it.
Oh, he doesn't wanna track his cows down, you know, Mr. Yaw is not really.
Yeah, maybe we don't say anything and then the fence suddenly appears there, then we're.
That's, that's how I would go with that.
I, I, I'll give you an example, and uh, Jeremy, I'm sure you remember this, that I'm probably going back maybe eight, nine years ago. One of his cows moseyed down like the Central City Parkway area. Came west and was standing there helpless, not knowing where to go by our twin tunnels.
Oh, no.
It was between the, the pretty steep cliff and the cars whizzing by going through the tunnel and it didn't know where to go. It was just a big black cow standing there, it was the last thing I expected to see. But I'm saying that they can get a wild hair and decide to go wander off somewhere and.
My God.
In this case, it was actually on I seventy.
Please don't even.
Well, two winters, two winters ago, I had two of them. That had broken through the ice just east of there and in the creek.
Wow.
His cows?
And, and, yeah, and they were Bob's cows. And they were both, they were in the ice water. And.
They called you to get them?
I, well, no, we had happened to be down there, we were getting a recovery for Idaho Springs Police. And I wound up, we want, I wound up winching two cows out of the creek. And then they were so upset and angry, they didn't, yeah, they didn't want nothing to do with nothing, but I had them both back out onto the road. Or onto the front of the road. And I wound up putting cables to both of them and driving to make them follow all the way down the bike path, basically. And then I found the open gate that they had ducked through and put them back. But, yeah, it, that, I mean, that's a real thing, they, they. I mean, it's, and, and the state was like, well, it's kind of our fault. Even though they got out of the new property, it's still our fault.
Somebody hits that cow and dies, and then who's got the liability?
The state.
I can't believe that the owner of the cow doesn't have some liability.
The, the state. Nothing, and the state, and the state takes care of that, that cow and three or four generations of what that cow can make. It's no joke, Colorado's not a.
Open range laws are really.
Yeah, they are, they are, and they're, they, they don't budge on them or anything else, so. Yeah, so those two cows that could have died.
Isn't the same thing with wolves, that they take care of?
So Bob Young could have actually sued, even though somebody left the gate open.
Yeah, they do.
So why would you?
They are funny.
If those two cows had died because they were both cows, right? You like eligible for, for calving, et cetera.
So they were heifers.
Yep, and it, well, if they hadn't had Young yet, they were heifers, but they were cows. Because they had babies in rain, which transmitted cows, but either way.
I will take.
They, so Bob Young could have sued the sheep.
Because he lost his cows.
For, for both of those cows.
Somebody got killed.
And three more years of generations of what they could have produced.
On their.
And he'd have won the case like hands down, that, that, and that's open range.
So, is like a cattle farm an option or is it about too narrow?
No, because that's animal cruelty.
Cattle farms?
Cattle farms are everywhere.
Okay, so a bike and the cow is also animal cruelty.
On your property.
Um, is this not also, is this not also a concern, even if we didn't do the swap, like this swap right here?
It's our property.
Yeah, that's, I understand.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Potentially, so we have, so that's regardless of this land swap that issue, and I think we could maybe consult with Carmen a little bit with this.
And in fact, Bob Young uh was telling me very matter-of-factly, and I believe correctly. Before we had even thought about the land swap, that he felt it was just a matter of time. Cows would end up finding their way eventually onto our acreage and as cows do, might just follow the trail down.
That's all funny games, so someone gets.
Are, so are we liable for that?
Yeah.
Us or the state?
If, if some, if a biker hits a cow, who's liable?
State, which is.
So, I mean, that's the question, right?
We have an executive session.
I think Carmen needs to handle.
And part of the, the urgency for the executive session was to allow some time to talk with Carmen about uh this proposed land swap. So if you have some legal questions, there wouldn't be time to do it, but, because it does involve the, the negotiation of land actually.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I think cow deal is a big deal.
It is, well, it's a big deal regardless, but with the land swap, I don't have a problem because the acreage is the same.
Yep. And if it makes it a little bit easier.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if we have the fence thing, it makes it a little bit easier.
Well, I'm, I'm thankful that it makes the trail construction uh.
For sure.
A little more simplified.
Well, that's.
That's what we're.
Ten more miles of trail is in this park. We have named it about it, I like it.
Well, the, the nice thing that you mentioned about that southern parcel, parcel five, is it would allow us to have an exit that goes through all city property on the right end way.
That'd be awesome, yeah. So those are the pros.
What um, what is little parcel six and parcel seven look?
Yeah, one of those old, oh, those old three things.
Yeah, down the very bottom, south.
I think that has to do with um some area that's along Riverside Drive that uh. Bob Young does not need, and so he figured it'd be better that the city to own that piece, we don't have any problem with that.
And that pink portion, if I recall correctly, and was, it's adjacent to his access there on Riverside, and so then it's just as like he owns all the.
Gilson?
On Gilson?
Is that that Gilson or Gilson Gosh?
Exactly, we don't, we don't have that access there, it's that vicinity, so.
Yeah, there's like a little road that goes up there right now.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's.
And that road kind of generally runs along this hill a lot, and so it kind of acts as a good boundary, like a clear boundary.
Now, did any of this change with the sale of Howard Drive?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Well, uh, Gil, did you have anything else?
Well, yeah, I know, I update you a little on.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, before you do that, um, just to let counsel know, the next steps on this will be, if counsel is good with this proposal. We'll go ahead and move forward with a ballot measure, it does require a ballot measure of people because it involves parkland. See parkland, well, but the parkland, uh, so we'll work on that, uh, we'll be involved in annexation, de-annexation. Um, so we'll be quite a bit uh involved in making this uh happen, but. Uh, we work very closely with Bob Young and Kama and a lot of back and forth, and really appreciate Gil being out there in the field and actually making sure that the, the boundaries are in the best interest of the city and, and the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park. So, uh, we think this is a really good proposal, Bob Young was invited tonight, he couldn't attend, but uh he's fully supportive of it, so. Um, we will look forward, and if there are any questions regarding the executive session.
The ballot is in November?
This fall, the first Tuesday in, in November.
So yeah, that's fine. We have a.
Every time we have a ballot issue, it costs us money to rent some stuff on the ballot.
It does, although this will already be an organized election, so the.
So it's less, okay.
All right, Gil. So, yeah, where are we at? Uh, probably about into this month, we'll have around ten to twelve miles of trail finished up there. Another set of stations, fingers crossed. It's rough going up there. Uh, a lot rockier than we thought it would be. Uh, so it's pretty much taken twice as long. It's come along great, uh, we, one highlight, we had the trek downhill mountain bike team out.
Oh.
To check it out, and they, they called this first trail we built for bikes revolutionary.
Cool.
In a good way.
And in a good way.
Just making sure that wasn't like.
Uh, well, we have the hiking trail, you, we did that years ago, then we have a hiking only trail, uh, we, we're now calling it Jack's Peak. So you guys change your mind, uh, that's the first peak that sits right here, uh, because the trail's called Ten Day Jacks. So that hiking trail's completed. And then we have, the first downhill trail is almost done here, we're in the Punchless side of. And then we have the first downhill trail is almost done here. We're in the punchless side of things. Fell apart, so. So that will open it up pretty good and we're in the middle of building more, so. Rushing forward and hopefully get some money from our friends, the Argo folks.
Yep.
Keep this going.
So it sounds to me like the words that came out of their mouth is good press if we got it in the right spots.
Good press if we.
Yeah, the trek team said it's revolutionary.
Revolutionary, which.
Something like that. Do you have that out in the public?
Yes.
To bike riders. That's something that will.
Yes, we'll be, when this thing opens, buckle up. We're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to communicate where to park. Uh, but your, your citizens who live here.
We'll have a discussion about that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Need to be aware that we're, we're gonna do everything we can, though.
Well, I mean, everything around it, with the exception of Colorado Boulevard, it's residential only, so.
Right.
I mean, I'm gonna tell my residents that, that live near me.
Yep.
Toe, toe, toe.
Yeah.
It's just not gonna happen and, and.
Speed limit, please.
That's.
Yeah, the speed limit, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we can't control people's behavior, but we'll do all we can to communicate those messages. But it's very fine. It's, we, we, we've had engineers out there who are just volunteers. I think we're around two thousand hours of volunteers this year.
Wow.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's a whole year.
There are a lot of guys and gals are coming out to help make this.
That says something for the enthusiasm about the project too, though.
They're very, they're very excited. That's it. Much good questions.
All right, uh, council, any uh?
Paul, Paul. Yes, Paul, when do you want to start on that emergency trail? Uh, trying to figure out a hard date for, uh, for public traffic patrol, I've been saying, uh, contact four places. I've got two quotes back.
Okay.
So far.
We could start as early as two weeks out from now.
I was thinking, well, is the twenty ninth of July good for you?
Sure.
I just like to have a hard date for, for these.
Is that a, that's a Monday?
It's a Monday.
Yeah. You want to shoot for that?
Uh, that's, yeah, cause uh, we bring this to the twenty second of July, um, council meets for approval.
Yep.
And then uh. Go from there.
Okay, great. Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, council, any uh questions for staff or for Gil? Gil, thank you very much.
Yeah, good for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for being a great city.
No, thank you very much.
We've enjoyed working with all these.
Oh. Good team.
It is a good team, man.
Okay, see y'all. Thank you, thanks, Ica. Well, uh, chief, welcome. Counsel. Uh, the last thing we have is on uh vehicle replacement and uh chief, if I'm remembering right, you had given us a heads up about uh, you know, the, the time it takes to get these vehicles. And uh, you know, uh, early on, we were thinking we uh probably would take one on in uh next year and then we'd do it in the next year, but as fate would have it, uh, a letter from Ford.
Surprise, surprise, surprise. So, I mean, it's, it's like a moving target with these cars. Probably one of the more frustrating things that, that, that I, that I've gone through because so in twenty twenty-two, we tried to order a car and then we never got it. So they never built it. So then they said, well, we'll deliver that in twenty twenty-three with, and then we ordered one in twenty twenty-three. Happy to say we have those two vehicles. Those aren't outfitted yet with emergency equipment because they're so far down on the list for that. Um, and so in early twenty twenty-four, I was then told, because originally, if you remember right, mayor, I actually told council, Ford had said, we're not gonna take any orders right now. So during the budget process for this year, we just said, well, we're not gonna order anything because uh they're not, they basically told you, they weren't gonna build anything, you're just catching up. So they came to us in late February and I've signed the document on March or February twenty-eighth, I think it was submitted on March fourth for an intent to purchase. I was expecting that we would have, we would hear something in ten months to a year about that and then surprise, there's two vehicles uh down and forward. So yeah, after talking with the fleet salesperson, they basically said what they did was they had a lot of standing orders with larger agencies. That's why I kind of mentioned the larger agencies for this moment. They had some standing orders where agencies have just twenty cars on order every year, thirty cars, forty cars, fifty cars. And so they were, they were building and going to those builds and getting so far behind, they, they finally said stop and they Ford, the Ford went, the Ford umbrella went to all the dealerships and said, but we're not, we're not doing these repeat orders anymore. We want to make sure that we're filling orders because some of these agencies then too were not, they'd say, well, we only want half of that order. Like this, we don't have to accept it. So, so they really, they said timeout. So they, they basically cleared the queue, they started over and they, and now they basically told me that they think they could, they could build these cars and fill these orders within ninety to one hundred and twenty days, which is unheard of. I don't even think that happened even pre-COVID as far as my experience. So um, so that's where, that's where we are, we are. So uh, I spoke with Andy about this. Um, obviously it wasn't something that we had budgeted for. The, the, there are two cars there. We don't have to, uh, we're not committed to anything. That's why I signed those, signed that intent. Um, but we're not, it doesn't tie us to anything. It's, you feel like they just try to plan it out. In fact, these two vehicles were originally, we had them scheduled for emergency equipment outfit in February of twenty twenty-five because that's when we expected to get those. So.
I'm sorry.
So I'm not sure. We're still gonna have to work with the, the outfitter to see if we can get those out, those potentially moved up to be outfitted sooner.
What about the two that we got at the end of twenty twenty-three? Those have not been outfitted.
Correct. They're sitting over repeating.
Okay, when did, when are those on schedule?
They're on schedule for August.
Okay. You don't take them on schedule?
No, those are, those are on the schedule and paid for.
Okay, yes.
But these other two were just brand new vehicles sitting down. Back in twenty-two or twenty, twenty-two is that when we didn't get the vehicles? Is there a contract that we have? What's that? No, it's the same, it's, I feel like it's the same thing, Scott. I feel like it's that you do an intent to purchase and you can say, well, I'm, I'm intending to, but they all know you have to go through a governmental approval process. I can't just approve that. We're not obligated, they're not. Exactly, exactly. And then the other question I have is when they sell thirty to fifty vehicles to an agency, I'm wondering if those agencies get a better break on the price than an agency that goes after two vehicles. I know it's all through the government pricing model, so I'm not exactly sure how that impacts the larger orders.
I don't think.
I don't know. Probably is. Since it's government, maybe.
Now, is that on top of the chief? Do, do we still owe?
Yeah, we buy the.
Another twenty-five or twenty-six grand on your, your vehicles?
Yes, we haven't. Um, I have to look to see. I believe that went through a council approval process for the two that we have right now.
Under schedule.
Correct.
And, and, and that, you, the two you have sitting though.
The two I have sitting, I believe council already approved that, that emergency equipment outfit.
Prior to inflation.
Correct.
Today.
Correct. And the other thing I want to add to
Joe Biden's.
That Scott, Scott said was that not only did they not fulfill the order in twenty twenty-two, they said, we're moving you to twenty twenty-three and then they charged us for that.
For the, that's what I was.
I went back to council and asked for, there was an additional so four or six grand or something that.
So they're not honoring what, what was at the time.
No.
There, because the units weren't very giving you.
It's very hodgepodge.
And, 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 and yeah.
It's almost criminal.
And we still owe another twenty, well, basically another fifty-five thousand on the two you currently have.
Um, like I said, the two we currently have, I think that was approved through council, but I have to go back a little.
Right, but we haven't paid for it, so we still owe it.
It's still sitting in a line item. It's sitting in a line item. It's already budgeted.
It is, right.
We haven't written the check yet.
Right, but on top of the.
Ninety-four and fifty-four.
Sure, yeah, hundred, another hundred and fifty-some thousand or whatever.
Chief, would this replace all four of the vehicles that you listed?
That's what I was wanting, is that, yes, exactly.
Yeah, on the. So these, these four, like the one that beats thousands and then the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
So.
Correct.
So we can dump those out of the fleet then for a hundred and fifty grand, basically.
Sure, yes. And not only that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be kind of, I know we have the next. The, on this list, the twenty fifteen Ford Taurus, just to throw, just, I was talking with one of the officers before I came to this meeting, believe it or not, and he was driving it and the steering, it stopped steering. He was on I seventy.
Yeah.
And so, so, so we're probably gonna look, we may have to look to, because I can't just not have the vehicle. We have to have, we need to respond to emergencies. Well, I'm just telling you, like, there was, it was sort of a, it's like, really, that's great timing to find out that, that the car, there were some lights that started flashing and then he did not have any steering at all. So like three seconds or four seconds, the lights were flashing. He was okay, but he was nervous because he, there was like a mini accident and he was a little bit nervous.
That one didn't go anywhere right away. Well, and I can tell you, to fix the car is thirty-five hundred plus bucks. There's no, it's an electronic portion of the car, you know, and they're like twenty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for a part.
Well, you have intimate knowledge of the twenty thirteen.
Right, so, so that's fixed for the car, right? I'm, right, so where do we decide to, to budget the money? It doesn't make sense.
Well, we need two more vehicles.
Exactly.
Do we buy one now, one next year? Do we budget, we have the budget money for them for both this year?
Well, we have two currently.
But we need.
Yeah, we have. And we, and we have, well, and then got two more that, that showed up.
We need to buy this.
Let's just get the car fixed.
So, right, so, so what we do, right? And, and, and really honestly, for four cars, we're talking a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Right.
Yeah, hundred.
Well, I think the.
On forty-eight thousand.
Yeah, like these two end up being like ninety-five. The good news is we did not spend as much in other capital improvements issues.
Exactly.
We do have the money and it's just my suggestion because the cars are there.
Well, just like the chief said.
Well, if we don't buy them this year, we'll buy them next year. So we're reducing the budget a little bit next year.
And, and.
Well, what's it gonna cost?
Right, because they, they will mark them up.
They're gonna get extra. Just gonna go crazy. It'll be forty percent more in a year, I promise, guarantee.
Well, the thing too is if they don't have them, then you can't get their upfitted. That's like, that's been your.
Well, we have four.
Well, probably.
Chief, he's, chief's got two, two and a half.
Was uh, we had a thousand dollar difference between the two model years from twenty-three to twenty-four.
Uh, Paul, I'm sorry, how much difference?
Uh, it was a six thousand dollar difference between the twenty-three and the twenty-four.
Right. There you go, right.
We buy it twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we save six thousand dollars by buying the last year of model.
Uh, in, in August, we should have all four outfitted and ready to roll. They're saying, well, they're saying ninety-two hundred and twenty days.
We'll have two. Well, we'll have two, we'll have two outfitted by the end of August, which is what we should have.
Who cares? But we can have our hands on four.
But we have our hands on the other two.
There we go.
And trying to squeeze those in to get those outfitted before February of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
I would hope that it would be before the end of the year.
That's a no brainer.
So then what, we would, we wouldn't order any next year.
Right.
But we would, you're exactly right, because we didn't budget for any this year. Now we're doing this, so we wouldn't need to budget any for this year or for next year, so for twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
And in all reality, mayor, we likely wouldn't need to budget until twenty twenty-six.
Gotcha. Or seven.
It's more like the standard amount to like operate, like this four vehicles, like how many you need to.
Well, we have nine officers, so there's typically a, a vehicle for each officer. Plus, there's a vehicle for the code enforcement officer. So there are individual, and then we, if, in an ideal world, we would have a spare. So that if one car is being worked on or goes down, then you have a, a spare vehicle.
You recycle one of these for spare.
Yes, that's exactly what I would try to do, to just take the best one and make out a spare.
Chief, chief, does, does every single officer get to take one car, just supervisors?
Uh, the, the two supervisors both do. Um, and then officers that live within a specific distance do unless there's some other special assignment that they would need to respond, like slaughter or something, right?
Because I know the county, good, because in other county, like there, well, just like we had the Sonoma County car. Cars here in town.
Is it gone now?
So one of our officers actually parks his car, one of the PDs down the hill, because he lives pretty far away. So I let him take the car down the hill and he parks it one of the PDs. I can't remember which PD it is, but he parks there and then he drives home, so.
Yeah.
So he's not driving like a, a crazy distance to his house.
Right, because county likes, you're allowed to go the county line.
Correct. So ours, I believe, it's like twenty-five miles. So I think he's like at eighteen miles is where he's parking.
Okay, wow.
And then, and then he drives home, but it's just a, it's enough, that's all. And then we resell these vehicles and we'll get a little bit of money back.
It's like trading car and, dude, it's five hundred dollar deal, big deal.
Right.
They sell some fresh.
Hopefully a bit more now.
I'll actually.
Back to front of this group, because we have some auction items that we're gonna have to address here. Hopefully, then probably the next work session. And then the outfitting, uh, last two cars might go into next year's budget instead of this. It potentially, it potentially could. I mean, worst case scenario.
We have the money for the outfitting as well, okay.
Well, I think, yeah, we outfitted, we already proved that, okay, to my correct.
For the two vehicles we bought last year, yes.
Yep.
No, we, we have, we have, we have enough right now, what they're saying, because we didn't do capital improvement project. We have enough for the whole hundred and fifty grand.
Yeah, because we missed a whole year, basically, right, which the chief didn't ask for in budget form, so.
I, I know. And so, I mean, I don't know what to say about this. It's just, it feels like it's very like fluctuating and it, I was very blindsided.
It feels, I think we feel fortunate.
I thought it was like.
Me too, that's what I.
I thought it was like a joke and it was a hidden camera somewhere. I thought this isn't real.
I thought, and I think it, at, at basically, you know, I mean, in today's world, at, at sixty-ish, you know, thousand car, you know, outfitted right, like LE style ready to go is, is actually pretty cheap, dude. I mean.
Do we have uh any record of what we've done in the past, how many miles we put on a vehicle or we have a typical number that we?
We do have a mileage, so that's what, for this concession, we got police cars. It's not a mileage thing, it's an hour, it's a forty hour, so we idle time.
Yes, thirteen miles an hour.
So a hundred twenty-five thousand mile, mile car, it's two hundred and fifty thousand mile rate.
So I mean, but mileage is really one of the only gauges we have, so if it's a hundred and twenty-five, it's two fifty, then we should be getting.
What we have to do with, with, at a hundred and fifty, our price of vehicle, if they had idle time, the cost of war is one of our standards for fleet. Because we knew our maintenance cost would triple after a hundred and fifty thousand, which we, the days.
Right. And that run that gets more.
That's the name I'm talking about.
Yeah, so it's the same thing for PD, for his PD cars.
Two of these are a hundred.
As you bump up to a hundred twenty-five, hundred thirty, hundred forty, so we used to replace vehicles even trucks at a hundred fifty, it'd be off the road, out of fleet. Because we know our costs would start to double up. The one Taurus, twenty thirty Taurus, that needs a turbo, it's a pretty example of how that doubles overnight.
Yes, two thousand five hundred dollars.
So it makes total sense instead of dumping money into.
Our vehicle.
Yeah, you start dumping money into it, which is good if you're a business, because you can duck it. It's not good for a municipality, because we might be like a tax deduction from that, you know, reinvestment, right? So we just lose money by, by carrying vehicles longer than we should have.
And then count that for warranties.
Based on you, what you said, you're dead on, normally a hundred fifty thousand is really kind of pushing it. Normally, it's always looking around a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty-five thousand miles. Well, we're putting more miles before you get your new vehicles. That's, that's true. They'll have probably another ten to twenty thousand miles.
Yeah, right.
By the time we get those other two, you might be closer to a hundred.
And that was my question about letting the guys take it home.
So, I think it sounds like, it sounds like we need to do this.
So they can jump on it.
I, uh, yeah, I, I just want a direction from council, uh, would you be all right if we took delivery of these, even though it is early? And then we postponed purchases in future years to offset it? Uh, if we save at least a model year markup in the meantime?
Yeah.
Uh, Kate?
Yes.
Janine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Scott?
Jeremy?
All right, okay.
So, uh, Jim, do that.
Okay, all right, absolutely. All right, done deal. Uh, I want to thank everybody at seven oh four, uh, if you'd like to take a break, we'll reconvene in a quarter, five minutes.
I've never heard in forty-seven years.
Well, I was going to college and I get to.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna.
It's kind of your lap instead of like crossing the board. It's like, okay, now, okay.
Yeah.
Ultimately.
Team?
They're still responsible.
But.
So, what, him? Yeah.
Why do you have to do that?
Dylan, you're a good man. Sounds exciting.
Well, congratulations, we've settled our problems, we should.
Alright, alright.
Sorry, lines want to know. Maybe I'll I'll ask Kelly, you know.
I don't want to sound like a crazy person about these, but I don't hurt the area. It is gonna be a thing, don't you think so?
Well, I may have to get aggressive.
I have no idea. Yeah, but that's something that I have to talk to whoever's gonna be in service. About, I mean, I know there's certain people in our neighborhood that already have problems with, you know, having, because we've got off street.
Oh, right. So, let's expect, you know.
Exactly, I I'm very strong. What's that? Right.
For you? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know that, but.
Now they stress.
That road, part of that road goes up behind the Argo, it's.
I guess it's self.
Probably financial.
Oh, yeah.
My house was cheap, worrying about.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's why I thought that little.
Maybe you're not a. I don't know.
We get to wait around like.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that? Oh, my goodness.
I'll come through alone, yeah.
I'm gonna.
Chubby little red cheeks he's got going on there. Is that your first one?
First.
Oh, that's so exciting, what's his name?
That, that.
Right. That's, that's.
Was it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Rory, just Rory, not like. I don't even know. What's the ribbon of bump that?
I don't know.
Isn't there one? It's funny, I go to my house. I think it's. Like the one that like.
Really.
Like burning my.
Because I want.
Yeah, there was another older, I think, so I. That's a good name, Rory Cowan. Ah, that's a good one, yeah, and.
I got a buddy.
Rory's a very unusual name, he's just.
It is.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, it's not a main.
I don't even know one that are main.
Uh, I love that.
And and recent, you know.
I know two, one is named after, that's, uh, yeah, in private, it's like it was. That's good, though, you know, don't, don't, how many lyrics? That's my brother's name, that's my brother's name. Grant, the grand's numbers, I love my name.
So we have to, east state or west state.
We want to go, yeah.
We do.
I have a question, wait, check on that.
Looks like it's been a really good trade.
It's like weird, it come along.
There's, there's need someone Ecuadorian to, 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 yeah, we're not in Ecuadorian, because there's just someone else that I would try to, let, 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 let. But those are like, yeah.
Right.
Like talking about.
So you're in the middle of nowhere.
Literally.
And they.
Yeah, that's strange.
I can talk about it for more things.
Because I think with that, you know, that's probably like your delivery door.
Yeah, now.
I'm like, no.
Some girl who's like a theater, went to high school and had like.
Yeah, that's funny.
It's crazy, I was in Cosmo one time, and this electrician, we go, that's, that I had. Early on in her career, we're on the same diet. But a lot of people, yeah, Colorado, a lot of people go to Colorado.
So Dylan, sorry, I have to ask, is it red wine or white with cricket?
Rose.
Of course, it depends on how it's meant, married.
They sell them at that Q Hotel, there's a little restaurant in that, right there at Morrison, has cricket tacos. They're ten dollars a piece, however.
Wow.
Which is wild.
Well, that's my excuse not to get.
Seriously. Cornet.
I wonder if you have a.
For ten bucks, is that what I heard, for ten dollars?
All right, uh, no rush, just let me know when we're good to go. We're good, okay, hey, I would like to welcome everybody to the regular, uh. Uh, city council meeting for Idaho Springs, uh, for July eighth, twenty twenty four, we'll call it the order at seven twelve. And, uh, like to start off with roll call, please.
Um, Kate Collier, here, Lisa Manipal, here, Janine Mariani, here, Scott Penel, here, Jim Clark. Mayor Pro Tem Jeremy Jones, here, Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Uh, here. And I'm sorry, I would like to wait an additional minute. I I thought I saw Jimmy just a minute ago, I don't know where he went.
Oh, nice.
The grand baby. The resolutions. When was the party?
Uh, the third, that's where it was on the.
Third of July?
I wasn't. Wasn't around, I was very long.
That's okay, that was a better one, yeah, better fireworks.
All right, and for the record, Jimmy, sir, as well. Thank you, Jimmy, uh. Essentially, we've completed a roll call with everyone here, and I would ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We have an agenda before us tonight, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda for the July eighth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Thank you, Lisa, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
A second from Janine, any discussion of the agenda? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and say aye, aye, any opposed? Does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest? Uh, hearing none, I will move on to approval of the minutes, do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the minutes from June twenty fourth to the twenty four.
Thank you, Scott, do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed? Uh, we have the bills before us, uh, tonight, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bills to July eighth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Jeremy, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. And, uh, any questions on the bills?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I mean, H D R engineering, which is on page five, um, this is the Virginia Canyon, Virginia Street, is this part of the expenditure that we'll be discussing later? Or is it separate?
This is separate.
Separate, okay. And then with the historic rail adventures, um, give an eighty five thousand dollar bill, how, where does that put us with the final amount? Because I can't remember how much was left on it.
What page is that, Lisa?
Also on page five.
I would have to check on that, I don't.
We would still, we still have balance, though, am I correct?
We do, we do, and there's still more work to be done, they expect to be done towards the end of this year.
That's what, that's what they said, they were really pushing for end of twenty twenty four, I just couldn't remember how much was left on it, um, I think that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, any further questions? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manipal.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And, uh, do we have any public comment tonight, either online or signed up?
Nothing online.
Okay, all right. Okay, no public comment tonight, um. We don't have a finance officer with us tonight. And, uh, only one resolution, number fourteen, do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve resolution number fourteen, series twenty twenty four, a resolution designating a temporary handicap parking space at twenty one twenty eight Virginia Street.
Thank you, Kate, do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. And, uh, any discussion?
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Temporary, what is the definition of temporary then?
I think they just have to read.
Yeah, because it's by resolution, I asked Carmen the same thing, and we're only, our council is only allowed to grant temporary spots a year at a time. So then next year, we would just do another resolution.
One year.
Because I asked about the.
Oh, very cute. Yes.
Okay.
So, we have to approve it again?
Yes.
Well, it makes sense, Scott. Just think about if the, if new tenants in the house didn't need to have a handicap there, and they would love to have their parking back.
Good call.
Right, we'd have to, we'd have to do it no matter what, so this might be just.
Good call, Kate.
But if we're approving it, then they're they're gonna have to tell us, they're gonna have to come forward and give us the reason that it's still in effect for the reason that we originally granted it for. We're not gonna just approve it without that person coming forward and saying something, so.
Yeah.
Do you reach out to them?
Yeah, application.
Ask if that's still applicable to them and.
I assume so, this is the first time for me personally taking one of these, so I'll just set an alert for any year. I know, I know that family's pretty well known around here too, so we do have it thick in our mind.
We do have another one on, it's your neighbor, actually.
Thirteen, but, yeah, if you look, though, those aren't there anymore.
They're, they're done with theirs.
So they might have done with theirs, yeah.
I think that was like for a procedure, I think.
Yeah.
But Viola's is permanent.
Right, that's why I asked.
So, for the duration in which she lives in the home, she'll need.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I think in that case, it'd probably be good to reach out to them versus making the owners.
But it's applicable, I mean.
Anyway, yeah.
We approve now for a year, and then, yeah.
Yeah, and then we approve it again, if she's still there and she needed.
Let me know when it's.
Because they, so we don't apply permanent signage either, I think we have those portable sign, or these type of spots, right?
No, we'll put in a permanent sign post. Uh, the sign posts are removable, I mean, we can always come back later and move the sign post.
If they don't apply or or whatever.
Right, but we will put up, uh, right now, we have temporary signage up there. And, uh, that was just to to help facilitate her needs right now. Uh, but we'll get a permanent post in there, or a. A more permanent post in there.
So that's, process is not a big deal for you to apply the sign?
No.
So I have a first and a second, and, uh. I, there one comment I just wanted to make, uh, council approved, uh, the temporary signage, Paul literally had it up the next day.
And so, yeah.
And that was fast.
That's good.
Um, but, uh, any, uh, further comments?
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you very much, that was fast.
Helping the citizens that way.
Uh, roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manipal.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh. We will move to city attorneys next on the list, uh. Harmon, I just want to make sure, uh, you didn't have anything for us tonight, other than executive session?
No, thank you, I'll see you there and talk to you further there, Mayor.
All right, all right, thank you, we'll see you in a few minutes then.
You bet.
Um, next, we'll move to a city administrator, uh, and he does have one request for action, do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve a proposal from H D R Engineering in the amount of eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty five. For the design support, construction management, inspection, and materials testing for the Virginia Canyon and Virginia Street Phase One Utilities Reconstruction Project. Split between accounts five one dash seven two dash seventy three twenty and five two dash seventy two dash seventy three twenty.
All right, thank you, Kate, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa.
This does carry us into twenty twenty five with this contract with H D R for that.
Okay, all right, that's a good point. Um, any, uh, discussion?
I actually do have, um, a couple of questions, when I read through their proposal. Um, the scope of work, it says it's on, uh, page two of their proposal. It's based on understanding, as we understand them, with limited discussion with city representatives. Has this been refined and discussed further, because they're asking for eight hundred thousand, like, how much more needs to be refined? I I I don't deal in construction, so this language kind of made me feel like I had to ask questions.
It's, uh, most of the engineering was six hundred thousand, and there was another two hundred thousand dollars that had been a little over. For testing, and that's materials testing on sites, and there was also, um, some record keeping. Um, there's amounts that say somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars.
But does that, does that, they said they've had limited discussions with city representatives, and the scope of work must be discussed and refined, has that been done?
We have discussed this with them.
Well, that's not within a contract, though, like, their contract's not something different.
If we had original contract, and there have any deviation, is that covered, I guess?
Like, is that the final bill?
Yeah, like, how final is this bill? Um, how, how much, because, just, I don't know, it seems like there's a lot of leeway in it, and. I don't know, I guess I'm trying to prepare for how much leeway is needed.
We did try to cover, this isn't, uh, this isn't conservative, this is, uh, trying to cover all of our bases down the line. Uh, there could be a potential for some additional costs or some overages in this construction. You never know where they're gonna pop out at you. Um, I can't say that eight hundred thousand dollars is the cap on this, if you go a little bit over that, uh, I wouldn't imagine, it's not gonna be another eight hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, no, I just wondered about, have we done enough? Because the contract doesn't say that we, they said limited discussions, and that seems sort of alarming if they're asking for eight hundred thousand dollars on limited discussions.
You get, I mean, you you could table it and.
No, I don't really need to table it, I'm just looking for, I'm looking for clarification from the staff.
Oh, that doesn't, isn't it fair to say there has to be, uh, limited at this point? I mean, because when they tear in with, for example, material testing or other surprises underground, that can affect. Uh, you know, the six hundred thousand that was originally planned.
It there, there certainly could be, there could be something that needs to be redesigned, and that that could cost a little extra, but most of those hours should be covered. There were four people that have the most hours in there, two of those guys are inspectors that are gonna be on the job, uh, primarily and most of the time. Uh, then we have a couple of other guys that are gonna be helping with redesign, if that's necessary, and then there were some additional, uh, hours. Uh, for billing for for other engineers for, for their specialties.
We had nine hundred hours this year for those two guys, those two inspectors each.
What's, and again, that carries over into twenty twenty five, that's a projection through the, this portion of the build.
Oh, Paul, Mayor, would it be reasonable then to say? Like, we're willing to approve this with, uh, like. And 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 I'm, I ain't a construction person, right, I'm a car guy, but say, all right, here's the amount. But we don't want to see at anything over twenty or fifty, I don't know. But a a figure on this, and then, like, approve that, like, so that they know where.
But a, a figure on this and then, like, approve that, like, so that they know where, or, or, or is that ridiculous? I don't know.
Not to, not to exceed a certain amount?
Well, yeah, over and above what, what this amount is, and, and like you say, I, maybe I'm all wet, I don't know, but I'm just saying it, because that, like Lisa said, this really doesn't have.
That doesn't, that, that's very vague to me. The other thing is, who is, who is handling this on our end? Who is our representative? Is that you?
That's Paul.
Okay, so you, are you, like, holding their feet to the fire so that when they say, hey, it's gonna cost another sixty thousand dollars, you're like, show me, show me the work?
Yeah, right.
So to.
Engineering is a little harder for me because their hours are not always here hours. Uh, their hours could be back at their shop on a draft table on a computer program. Uh, it's, uh.
Do we get a, do we get an invoice for those?
We do. And they're big, nice, big, thick invoices.
The work of our, I think, what we're talking about here, we're talking about Virginia, Virginia Street, the replacement fifty to fifty-three hydrants on, with some assumptions with the core testing, we know in certain areas, like, what's under the road, and we're making some assumptions what's deeper within that, our road base.
Mm-hmm.
Road surface.
What's unknown?
That's why there's unknown within these engineering contracts. And versus, uh, finite, we will do A, B, C, and D to phase, because there's a lot of unknowns in that particular contract that this contract accounts for and allows.
Well, when you look at the, I mean, that, I, I agree with you because.
And not from a cost perspective, just from a, a scope of work within the cost.
You look at the space, the area, that's, that's a horrible road. It totally needs this.
Yeah, so they can move, they can move within eight hundred thousand dollars. They can move labor hours any direction within that contract, within that scope by, by need.
They, they most certainly can.
And then they're pretty good about doing that, and then they give us a pretty good breakdown and says, this is what the engineering, this, this is what happened. What we found, this is what we did to engineer, this is the cost engineer, the solution for it. And they give us documentation of the entire project, which is nice because that allows us to have a record of what's in the street, which we really don't have at this.
No, we don't, and that we do need that. My other, yeah.
I know where you're going from, from the, uh, construction contract perspective. You use your contract that says, I'm gonna do A, B, C, and D, here's the cost, and construction contracts, especially engineering, don't do that by design, because they can float within that cost.
At least at this point, I think it's council's responsibility to make sure that we have control.
Yes.
Cold control instruments in place.
Very much so.
We just watch these. I think that's what she's questioning. We haven't worked with this HDR before. You have to put a lot of faith in each company that you're dealing with.
Right.
That they are, they're treating you fairly. They're not, you know.
Thank you, because this is a big chunk of money, and we are gonna have to explain to our citizens, why are you putting all this? I mean, anyway, this trip in Virginia knows that this needs to be done.
Yeah.
But people still ask questions. My other question, Paul, do you meet with them weekly? It says in there that they will do those regular meetings?
Yes, yes. Once, once this can, um, project kicks off, it'll be weekly meetings. Um, that's the same with the, the, the build, Public Works building we've been having. We've been made, this, we of course skip some, some from time to time. But, um, weekly meetings. This is construction management is what these guys are doing. They're gonna be, like, the, the boots on the ground actually watching this, because I won't be able to be there every day, all day, watching our.
No, you can't.
Uh, they'll also be doing the ground testing and action testing and, um, does the asphalt need our spec? Does the concrete need our spec? This is, there's a, there's lots of what these guys will be doing.
Well, I'm glad that they are meeting with you regularly. My other thing is, and I'm telling you this as somebody that, you guys all know, we all get our ears bent. Oh, God, can we do some kind of public meetings where we talk to people about what is happening? Can we give the public, like, updates? Like, you do meetings with them, I think that's great, but this is gonna be impacting, you know, people on Virginia, people on Riverside.
Traffic.
And y'all know that in that section, everybody has their assigned parking place. So if that assigned parking place is not there, people need to know this and plan for it. Like, I think that's one of our responsibilities too, is to talk to people who live there and let them know what, you know, pain is coming down pipe for them.
The good news is, it's not usually a full closure on the road. It's usually a rolling closure, so that does help quite a bit. I mean, we've seen these guys done before, but so they're not gonna close the entire sweep of it.
Well, I think, yeah, no.
Yeah.
These sections of it, though, will be closed. You might have to, if you're on one side of a closure, you might have to come in from the other side of Virginia to get.
Can we, can we go, like, with that?
Can we put a, can we do a, a meeting or you do a notice to the neighborhood up there? But if you're proactive, you, you don't have a crowd here until there's a problem.
Right.
There's nobody here.
I would like to be proactive with this one.
But when there's a problem on Virginia Street, there's ten people in there.
Oh, you're right.
Those big white signs that kind of notify people of, like, the driver licensing changes, I mean, can we do something similar to that for the, the upcoming?
We tend to do more door hangers or flyers, so, uh.
Isn't that sort of like, like, time intensive? I mean.
It, it can be.
Well, fortunately, Paul Wherley, talking, we're in twenty-eight houses.
Uh, and that's what I think. It's a smaller area. I think the door fires work well, especially to keep people apprised of what's going on. There will be, uh, with Colorado Boulevard, we have phone numbers and websites for, uh, for people to contact if they had questions. And, uh, we're gonna have something similar along the lines here.
But definitely, if we could just be proactive with that, because.
Can we, give them a place to park too, like, being in front of PD or something? If, you know, or the Bull Run Center or something.
They're not gonna, I don't walk that far. They're gonna park as close to their home as possible.
Have you met your neighbors? I don't know what you're talking about.
Now, we're trying to be nice, Kate.
Parking, there ever been a lot of us not.
I have plenty of parking.
I know you do.
It's just, uh, gonna be a mess for a short time.
All right, okay. And it, it will be. Uh, any further discussion?
Thank you for entertaining that.
Yes. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manipole.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, uh. Nothing from, uh, Assistant City Administrator, uh, Dylan, did you have anything for us tonight?
Okay.
All right, all right, well, thank you. It's good to, good to have you back. Um, uh, Wonder, anything further to share with us tonight?
No, but being you talked about engagement, anytime we do a street excavation permit or earth disturbance, I get contact for who their contact is. So when the public calls us, I have somebody they can directly speak to on said project.
Oh, cool.
Because I think something happened maybe six months ago, and that wasn't common practice, so it's become common practice.
Way cool. And I would like to thank you for your report. Uh, sales tax, uh, eight, uh, percent thing that are four point is, uh, pretty close to being in line with inflation, so we're, we're very, still very close to, uh, even when you account for inflation to a, a record, uh, type of year. So I think we ought to be. As busy as the city is on the weekends, you think more than that. Well, yeah, we'll see. It'll be curious to see what happens after we get July. Yeah. But, uh, all right, uh, well, thank you, Wonder, and, uh, Chief, uh, you're up next. Uh. Uh, do I have a motion on the vehicles?
I think a motion to approve the first two, twenty twenty-five, four to four interceptors from Phil Long Ford in the mountain, not to exceed ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Line item twenty-one, dash, zero, dash, six, zero, one, two.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, and I'm sorry, did you say?
Yeah, for sure.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, I have first and a second. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manipole.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And, uh, Chief, uh, before, uh, I move on, I just want to make sure you didn't have anything further tonight?
Oh, mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before you.
Yes.
I have a request to ask Chief, um, how your, your data collection was going from the alley, I don't, listen around.
The item is still on order and it's not there yet.
So it's not here, okay.
Unfortunately, it was like on back order, so, um, my hope is it'll three or four back order items. I'm hoping it'll be here in August.
Okay.
So I wish you, I would have thought it would got here last night.
We're still, we're still waiting.
Story of old things. Okay, thank you.
Chief Paul, you're on the, on the stand there. Uh, so the, the armed robberies, et cetera, through, through the county and our post office.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. But. I can touch on those.
Would, would, would you please, and was that a, was that a true and actual thing that they were trying, they were stealing a white shitty pickup armed with a AR type weapon?
Pictures of.
On Colorado Boulevard.
So first, first, let me touch on the, the burglary at the post office. So there were actually a couple of burglaries at the post office. So we're working with the, the postal inspector people. There, they have that, they have, there's some evidence, let's just say. There's evidence, and so, um, and there was something posted on social media that it was a robbery, which is not true. It was a burglary. It happened in the middle of the night. Nobody was there. So, so when you say robbery, people think like someone's jumping over the counter with a gun.
Right.
So that's not what, so that's what that was. I'm not minimizing it. Unfortunately, I think our city credit card, my city credit card was one of the things that got stolen.
I got the news too.
So now we've had to cancel that card. That's why we have actually a lot of reimbursements to our employees, because they're having to pay for things, and then we're reimbursing. Because we don't have our city credit card. Okay, so that's the post office. The more, the more serious matter are the cases that happened in the, in the outside of the jurisdiction of Idaho Springs in the county. Um, it appeared there's a group, fairly organized group of people that are trying to steal more like, not vehicles. They're actually trying to steal trailers with four-wheelers and UTVs and so-called toys on these trailers. And then, yes, there is video, which you can see on the sheriff's department page, that there was somebody that was armed doing, doing that. Um. I will say that that remains under investigation and is a high priority for the sheriff's department, and there's good evidence, and I'll just kind of leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
So.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Public Works, uh, Paul, did you have anything for, for us tonight?
Uh, just one more addition that, uh, I didn't turn in a report. I apologize about that. It's what, uh, the sheriff's department under sheriff did put in to affect the, uh, fire ban stage one for Clear Creek County that started July second, just, uh, in case anybody missed that one.
Okay, uh, thank you. And, uh, Paul, just because the question came up to the extent that you know, uh, normally for July, we have, uh, flags, uh, you know, on some of the poles and, uh, I, I don't know, uh, there weren't any, any flags this year.
That was not something that Public Works had done. That's, uh, that's something that's usually been done through one of the, the.
Rotary.
Association.
Yeah. Oh, Lions Club, is it? Okay.
It didn't happen. Throw it downtown this year. It probably didn't happen to make it out. It's.
He's not paying every year. Uh, Jeremy, thank you. I'm glad.
It didn't happen this year. Uh, due to three or four people being out of town, which is kind of one of those.
All right, all right, well, thank you very much. Bummer, yeah.
Can I, can I, I don't know where to interject this. I'd love to, um, I just want to pass on to the fire department and Jeremy, since you can be their representative. Thank you for getting a fire out quickly in the, in July.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna mention that under mayor's, yeah.
Another problem, we've, if you look at the history of town, the fifty years of fireworks and fireworks, that's not the first time it's happened.
Oh, yeah. It's every year.
Um, not exactly. Location, so they did a really good job and they, they took care of it very quickly and nobody getting hurt, which is all that really matters at the end of the day.
Isn't this the last year for fireworks? Well, isn't the contract expired this year?
Contract is up, uh, this was the final year.
I think we need to talk about sometime soon about what we're gonna do next year, because I think fireworks need to be enviable, personally.
Actually, I, I saw some drone shows that looked pretty.
Well, we, I promise, we, we will entertain that subject.
Yeah.
But, uh, yes, Jeremy, thank you. Uh, we are very appreciative of all the effort there. Yeah, yeah, the fire department did a great job. Ed, uh, water facilities, got your report? Uh, thank you, sir. We also got, uh, and some, uh, photos. And, uh, just, uh, wanted you to weigh in. How are things, uh, going down there?
Well, uh, over the weekend, I was able to process and transfer, um, the remaining solids that were in the digester into the first one, and we finished it today. And we're able to climb down in there and find out exactly what was going on with that, uh, aeration system. Uh, it's pretty extensive damage. Um, we need to redo like floor anchors, piping. Um, I have an idea of how to do it. We get with Paul and see if he may, yes, see if he thinks that's a good idea. Uh, but we're gonna make it work. I'm also gonna bring in Bart. Uh, he was the contractor that did the install of all of this stuff. And I'm hoping and thinking that, um, he can come in and maybe provide some parts and some labor and some expertise to help us out with this stuff, even though the warranty has expired. We, we only had it for a year.
He was your agent installer, yes.
But Bart's been, Bart's a, Bart's a cool cat, and I think he'll be reasonable and, um, and do what he can in order, you know, I don't expect to be free, but, uh, he'll, he'll be reasonable. He's been really helpful so far.
Okay.
All right. Good work on that. Thank you, sir. Uh, anything further?
I've been in the digester all day.
Oh, boy.
All right. I don't even remember what else I put on the report.
No. But, uh, we got some good photos, and I appreciate the.
Right, and we took plenty of more today. Uh, there's probably a foot of muck down here that he was walking through and then shoveling this stuff and bumping it out. You guys want to see some broken pipes at the bottom of what appears to be a mud puddle, muck. Um. Visualize.
Muck is not a good word, man. Not when we're talking.
Oh, yeah. It really does just look like muck.
Yeah, that's bad.
These installation pictures were done upon when it was installed?
Yes.
So you can kind of.
Yeah. See where. You can see what's supposed to look like.
Right.
Uh, and then, and then I think I put a picture in there where I got it downloaded up where I could take the picture of
Yes.
one piece that was floating in the tank.
Right. And there are a couple of different options of what could happen, and this one here, I know, uh, in my head, this one's like the level eight uh, possibility of what could have happened down there. Uh, anchors came out of the bore, one of the P bits is busted in half.
With Bart going to repair it, will he be able to investigate that more to be able to see what the cause was or?
Well, I'm pretty sure what the cause was, was the anchors in the concrete had failed.
Good.
Uh, they're the drop-in guys, right? And anyone that's done drop-in anchors knows that you gotta whack them with a hammer pretty good in order to get it to stay in the concrete. The guys were, were installing this stuff, were complaining about those anchors and having a hard time.
And there's different types of anchors, but not just dropped in, but there's other type also.
Right, this particular one, you, you drop it in, whack it.
Yeah.
And then you do the screw, like, and also add up, and then suspend your pipe in the, above the floor.
Right.
It's quite a mess. I like, I like epoxy. I like it right into the concrete.
Yeah.
Um, that might be difficult because it's full of water and sludge, but there isn't a waterproof, uh. It'll dry under the water. Epoxy with an anchor, yeah? Yeah, yeah, or epoxy with an anchor. That's double anchored epoxy. That's me. All right, Ed, uh, thank you, uh, because I'm going to make a motion that would go into executive session before I make that motion. I just want to see, does anybody have, uh, anything else, uh?
Yes, I do.
Sure, Lisa.
Um, actually, this is for Chief, uh, and I forgot to mention this at the last meeting, and I apologize to the person that brought this up and to you. Um, the response from downtown to seeing your officers down there on the weekends has been really positive. Like, I've heard it from more than one person. They, they said they, first they saw Officer Romo, then they saw, over the past weekend, they saw a couple more, and they really, really appreciate it. They're very appreciative of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, anything further? Okay, uh, then, uh, Carmen, uh, welcome. I'm gonna make a motion that we go on to executive session, uh, at the appropriate time, uh. And, uh, Dylan, you can just let me know when we're done. I'll, I'll read the spiel.